...of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And trustee Marisak.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. Thanks for coming. Under the first item, under public comments, this is a two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that's not on the agenda to speak. Before we do that, would like to ask our Director of Public Works for some new employee introductions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I'd like to introduce two of our newer employees, are both our superintendents that are here tonight, Sean Murphy, our Street Superintendent, and Todd Ellis, our Water and Sewer Superintendent. Both of these gentlemen come to us from several years of experience. Sean came from the city of Naperville with about fifteen years of public works experience, and Todd has joined us coming from East Peoria with about twelve years of experience in the water industry. So we're excited to have these two gentlemen working for us and leading the charge for public works.
Awesome. You guys want to come down and do some handshakes?
Yeah, you gotta go through the drill.
I'm more of a hugger.
Give you ten bucks.
I apologize already.
All right, keep moving along on public comment. Is there anybody that's not on the agenda that wishes to speak? Go ahead, sir. If you would just state your name and address for the record.
Make sure the microphone's on, please.
There are three members here that are part of my HOA, the mayor, Steve, and Teresa Spurling are in my HOA Orchard Prairie North Homeowners Association. The treasurer took it upon herself to file an emergency order of protection against me for standing in my driveway. I don't even know this person. Went to court in Kendall, it was denied. I've lost my gun card. In here, I was supposedly swearing inside my own home with my windows closed. She stole, took away my rights for freedom of speech. I got that back. I did nothing. I retired City Wheaton twenty-six years. I have a criminal record now, even though it was denied by the Kendall County Court. It still comes up if I go to apply for a job, which I was gonna go apply at Oswego to plow snow if it got real heavy, you know, when they need emergency people, like for the, you know, the college guys, you know. Now, if I go there and they run a background check, they'll come up, oh, you're a hot head, you were domestic violence. This woman wanted me fifty feet away from her in my home, proclaiming my home was her home. And why, but the reason I'm presenting this to the board here is that, under our HOA agreement with the state of Illinois and you and the former builder, Ryland, which, because we do have two copies of the HOA bylaws, I feel that her taking upon the actions without giving me the opportunity to plead my situation, what she's complaining about to the board at the HOA is against, is illegal. And I would like the village to look into it as an illegal act, as a bully act. And then when she lost, immediately, kids on my property screaming in my window, police came three times and said, look, she's setting you up, call us all the time, we don't want you going out there and grab one of them or yell. And it's going on today even worse. So I thought, you know, I gotta come over and at least plead my innocence, you know. Kendall County Court denied I was innocent. And now my, you know, it's, I'm sixty-seven years old, I'm retired IMRF, you know, I wanna go get a part-time job or something like that. They're gonna run it, oh, you were charged with domestic violence. I didn't even, I literally didn't even know this person, you know. I know they live there, I tried to ignore them, because there's a lot of weirdness. I don't want to get into that, but that's my situation. I'd like the board or this village to look into the situation. If you want a copy of some of it here, in Kendall County denial by a judge, I'm not guilty. And I'd like to point out to the board, I got a real education in this type of situation, that this is the only law on all fifty states that never goes before a state's attorney or grand jury. It goes before the judge first, boom. And so when I went to the lawyer, it was fifteen hundred dollars right away, Andrew Nickel, how we doing? He goes, we're still, we're at fifty-fifty. I go, fifty-fifty? He goes, yeah, because the judge already ruled on it. I go, oh, this is great, you know. So this has been really traumatic for me. I'm single, my daughter and granddaughter were with me for a while, they were going through divorce. And maybe you could take a look into it, that she violated the agreement with the village and the state of the HOA going and taking this upon herself. There's no convictions, there's no, nobody was ever arrested, nobody was ever charged. There's nothing to warrant any type of her taking this action and saying, well, I did it on my own. No, she did it as an elected official of the homeowners association, and I feel it's illegal. According to the first three pages of our bylaws, it's in there, you know. And, you know, hey, a lot of other people are saying, you know, you know, they ruined, she ruined your life, you know. I have a perfect record from Wheaton, you know, nothing, zero. And it comes up now, boom, you were, somebody said you were domestic violence. I'm not attacking a woman or something in her home, or she's my girlfriend, and she's pregnant, I'm beating her up or something like that, you know. Like, that's domestic violence. I didn't, it's in this thing. And Michael Dunn was standing on his driveway. Well, I was out with my three boys, and I had to go in. What do you, what do you mean? Then she says, well, then I looked out the window, and he wasn't there anymore, so that's why I'm filing this emergency order of protection against Mr. Kaiser. Armed and dangerous, you know, like, you know, wow, you know. Look at what happened. And they're still playing games, you know. She got a lot of neighbors that are friends of her, their kids are always on my property, and they're trying to intimidate me to call the police all the time, which I do once in a while, and try to make me look even worse. And as an elected official of the homeowners association, and we're, all three of us, or all four of us are members, this is us, and that's why I'm presenting my case. And like, she uses our cul-de-sac, like, for mega plane with all these kids and everything. And one time I called the police, a couple weeks ago, I couldn't drive into the street. There's scooters, bikes, all kinds of junk. And so I, and I got out, and I just called the police. I said, you know, all this stuff's in the roadway, you know, this is illegal, it's just to harass people. So I looked at it, like, if I'm a HOA downtown Chicago, I get on, I come out of my condo, I want to go to the elevator. I had, if there's junk in the way, like bikes and scooters, you better believe it's the HOA, you can't do that. And she's the head of the HOA, you know, she's the treasurer. I feel that maybe the village could look into her activity is way out there. Today, they were playing on our island. One of the main reasons that you know in our HOA, we're charged for taking care of the maintenance of the island, right? Her kids are damaging it today, they're running all over the place, her friends. She's the treasurer, you know, eh, you know, like, it's just kinda intense. So, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. And I can tell, obviously, from the situation, that it is more of a personal issue and situation, but I can tell you, the agreement between the HOA and the residents, we're far, is far outside of our jurisdiction, we wouldn't get involved. But the one thing that we can look at, and the chief hasn't, if you haven't spoken to him about that, is the, the paper in your hand, the restraining order thing. I mean, I'm assuming you've talked to the police about this already, and if they haven't...
It's completely over, it was ruled on, not guilty, you know, like, it was, the judge, even the first time we went, because my lawyer subpoenaed all of the files from the police department, and he kept going like this, are you sure you want to come back? You know what's in here? And your lawyer's gonna subpoena the police next time. Are you sure you want to come back? Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. Okay, well, we went back. Finally, when she rose her hand, started saying all this stuff, the judge said, look, no more. You can't come here this way. He used every terminology except Judge Judy, and that's exactly what it was. And he said, you can bring him back again, but you better do it the right way, but you can't use any of this material that you brought in today against him, which is all so much bizarre. It's, you'd have to read it to really...
Okay.
It's, I'm a different person.
Yeah, okay. Well, he'll, we'll take a look at that and, at that first comment, not, not really most of the rest of that, but the first part about her acting on behalf of the HOA, whatever we can look at quickly, we will, but like I said, this is largely, you know, interpersonal relationship, an HOA relationship, I believe, and our attorney would agree, sorry. It's far outside of our jurisdiction to get involved with.
This came up in the case with my attorney and was taken before the bench, that in our past, I was in communication with you about raising a dues from forty to four hundred dollars. And it was me and you that then it came here, and that went on and said, no, you're not raising a dues to four hundred dollars, and you found out that they were insuring right aways and all this stuff for you and all that, and they wanted their money back and all that. Remember when I was emailing you and you emailed me back? My lawyer, in court, felt that there is some type of personal vendetta still there with the new regime of this HOA, because I helped you and me to say, no, people here can't afford going from forty to four hundred dollars. And it isn't, it's still at forty.
Yeah.
So that went before the bench. This is all legal.
Yeah.
So there's a personal vendetta, not only against me, but against the mayor yourself. So there you have it.
Must be going pretty well, because I don't know about it, so. But I do appreciate it, yeah.
It's over, but it hasn't been over for her, but...
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll, we'll do that, and I appreciate you coming tonight.
Hey, sorry, bringing bad news.
That's all right. Chief.
Do you want to copy?
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment, just to clarify? I am not a member of that association, I don't live in that subdivision. I'm a member of the HOA group, that's probably where you saw my name, but I...
I was hoping that you moved in.
You're just a member of the HOA Facebook page, just because you're a board member.
Correct, the Facebook page, and that's it. I don't live in the area.
She doesn't live in Orchard Prairie North.
So I'm not an official member of your association, I just want to make sure that you know that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, thanks, sir, let me, help me for you.
Chief, what do you know about this? Can you give us any background?
Let's, let's move on, and you guys can chat about this. I'm not sure that it's totally pertinent and public knowledge, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
We'll talk after.
All right, any other public comments? All right, all right, moving on, the second item is Leslie Salyers, did I say that correctly?
Saliers.
Saliers, I'm sorry, of the League of Women Voters of the Aurora area regarding their chapter. Welcome.
So again, my name is Leslie Saliers, I live at 2417 Roxbury Lane in Montgomery. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. Our newly formed Aurora chapter was formally recognized in July. The Aurora area chapter boasts members who reside in Aurora, North Aurora, Oswego, and Montgomery. So as the one and only Montgomery resident this far, I have the privilege of speaking to you all today about what we've been hard at work doing and what we plan to do in the future. I think one good thing to clarify is who we are. As the League of Women Voters, contrary to the name, members do not have to be women and do not have to be voters. To be part of this organization, you need only to be sixteen years old at least, and have a desire to be a leader and create positive, meaningful change within your community and our country as a whole. We're a nonpartisan political organization, this means that we neither suppose, or, sorry, support nor oppose candidates who are running for political office. This also means that we do not support or oppose political parties. We are, we actively, what we actively do is take stances on issues of public policy and on action, take action, sorry, on those subjects. The League takes on broad public policy issues like healthcare reform, the environment, as well as immigration. We choose what issues to target for study and to take action on only after there has been extensive study and a member consensus. Though issues like these can be taken on at a national level, we are truly a grassroots organization, and it can undertake studies on our own. Our own chapter plans to undertake a study of the impact of evidence-based funding on the three Aurora public school districts. While all of this may not be an aspect of the League that you are familiar with, we certainly are active in ways that you would expect. We've been busy throughout the area registering and educating voters. Last month, on National Voter Registration Day, we set up shop at West Aurora High School and registered over two hundred students, who will now have the opportunity to vote in the upcoming primary election in March. The board will be happy to hear that we will be at Oswego High School on Wednesday, and hope to register just as many students there. Hopefully, my next-door neighbor will be one of them. We'll be registering students at IMSA in the near future, and in talks to do the same at Oswego East. We also host events on topics of interest. For instance, does anyone on the board know of the anniversary that the League will be having next year? Well, next year is its hundredth anniversary, so we'll be holding events surrounding that anniversary, as well as the upcoming 2020 census. This part, past March, we sponsored and held candidate forums and local elections in Aurora. This means that maybe some of you will be hearing from us for, to participate in upcoming candidate forums. So to wrap this up, we're always looking for new members. We just launched our League of Women Voters Aurora area website, as well as Facebook and Instagram. And if any of you have any more information, I think you have papers in front of you, and I think that's about it.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's it.
And is there a fee to be a member?
There is a fee, I think that it will be, you can find it on our website, it's through the national as well.
Awesome.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
If you ever need to use this facility or the police department for anything that you guys do, please reach out.
Thank you, thank you, we'll take note of that.
And if you need members, I'm sure there's a bunch of people sitting here that would be willing to join, so.
Wonderful.
I just signed you all up.
Yes.
Do you need to be a woman to vote, to be a member?
I already did, you don't need to be a woman.
Oh, I missed that part.
Do not to be, yeah, do not need to be a woman or a voter, you just need to be at least sixteen years of age, I hope you qualify. And breathing, yes, yes.
As she said earlier, he's a hugger, apparently, he's not a listener.
Awesome.
All right, anything else?
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on, consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of September twenty-third, executive session minutes, the building report for September of 2019, the water usage report for September of 2019, accounts payable through October tenth, 2019, and the cancellation of the October twenty-second committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
All right, that carries unanimously. Moving on, we have nothing for separate action. Items for discussion this evening, we have a liquor licensed request from Derek Drews for A-Dubs at 2086 Orchard Road, and with that, I'll ask Administrator Zoful for a summary on the item.
Thank you very much. The petitioner is here tonight, so we'll have them come down and address you about their proposal and answer any questions you have. As always, when we do this in the past, remind you, we currently do not have any liquor licenses available, so, but you can create one if you so desire. Tonight, what we're looking for is either, yes, you're definitely interested in moving forward, in which case we would do the background check, zoning issues, anything like that, no, you're not interested in this time, in which case it would be done, or if you would like more information, that either the petitioner or the village staff can bring back to you to help you in your decision. So with that, I will let the petitioner come and address you.
Good evening, board. My name is Derek Drews. I live at 2935...
I think it's off now.
Yeah, you pushed the button.
Oh, what about now?
We're high-tech here, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. I currently live at 2935 Old Glory Drive in Yorkville, Illinois. I'm from Oswego, went to Oswego East High School, graduated there. The reason I'm here before you today is to discuss an establishment I would like to put in Montgomery called A-Dubs. And essentially, what it is, is it kind of, it's a double of a barber shop in the front, and then on the flip side, behind the barber shop is a bar. So, kind of, it's this interesting style, because black men and women and minorities spend a lot of time in a barber shop. I regularly spend a couple hours in there, whether I'm waiting to get a haircut, or I'm just spending time in there, and that's pretty consistent with many of the behaviors that I've noticed as well, growing up, since I was a child and getting my hair cut. I like the idea, I found this idea from a establishment called The Blind Barber in Chicago, and they are very successful. Throughout the day, they have a barber shop and they're cutting hair, and customers are welcome to, goes to the back, and goes to this kind of secret bar area and enjoy a drink or two, and watch some TV, and just kind of relax. So that is my concept. Following that concept as well, is I would be interested in putting video gaming machines, if possible, to kind of help increase or level out those revenues. I would have a food menu, we would serve food, we would serve mixed drinks, wine, beer, and things like that. That is pretty much the concept, it's pretty straightforward, cut and dry. If you have any questions, I would definitely be interested in fielding them and answering them as best as I could possibly do so.
I have several.
All right, Derek, thank you. Yes, I'm sure we will have some questions. It's an, it's a, and I'll just say briefly, it is a concept that we have never been approached with as long as I've been involved. So I'm not sure how our code would respond to that, but let's assume that we can work around anything that we, that we desire to. I'm sure we have questions, and we'll start down there.
So in your letter, you talked about there being like a subscription or a membership. Can you please talk a little bit about that? How does that work?
Yeah, so I like the idea with co-op spaces, how people are interested in coming to spend time, and with those membership fees or subscription fees, people would, you know, be allotted certain, I want to say, yeah, necessarily perks, they would come in, and, you know, maybe we have a drink special or for members, and, you know, the price, you know, a separate price for them, just things like that. Maybe when we open up the bar, they would have priority, you know, kind of like a TSA pre-check type deal, where if it was busy, you could come in and, oh, you know, here, you can, you can order a drink sooner than, than other people in line. Those types of things, I think, would incentivize people and have them interested in a subscription fee.
Would the, would the bar portion be open to the public, or you'd have to be a member?
No, the bar portion would be open to the public, yes. That's actually a good idea, though, I didn't even think about that.
You had also mentioned using it for other types of activities. So how does that work? One of the things you mentioned, like, if somebody wants to have a yoga class, how does that work to switch over the space to do something along those lines?
So, yeah, the idea of, the idea of this space was to keep it very open, so people could potentially come in and do simple things like that. I want, you know, we could do a yoga class, and there could be alcohol involved. I've been to yoga classes like that, where it's called a brew and stretch, and people would enjoy beer and then have a yoga session. So, so things like that, though, I'm interested in activities like that, because it brings in different crowds.
Right.
And kind of helps keep that flow, that atmosphere interesting, and, and keeps people on their toes, and keeps them interested in the space, keeps them bringing, coming in.
Okay. The other, or one of the other questions I have, you had mentioned that you would expect half of your revenue to come from food and alcohol, and the other half to come from subscription and the video gaming. Typically, this board has granted licenses in the past where half of the revenue, at least half of the revenue, comes from food. So this is a little bit different request than what we've typically seen. And that's why I was asking you as well about the membership. So would you, you're saying it's just an ability to have some perks by having this subscription. Let's say I have a subscription, and I want, I want to teach a yoga class, so then I get first priority instead of just, if I don't have a subscription and I'm looking for space to do it, is that...
Well, yeah, the, the subscription wouldn't, I don't think it would increase or decrease the chances of getting a bid for, for renting a space. I wouldn't use a prescription fee for something like that. A prescription would pertain mainly to drinks, and if we had a punch card and, and things like that, that type of reward system, not necessarily saying, oh, yeah, you're, you have the subscription, you can use the space, how you, the whole space, how you see fit. I don't, I've never frequented a co-op that's like that, where you, you would be able to, I want to have first dibs on renting this space out there. The subscription and using the space for different uses would be completely separate. And that would be something that we, as an organization, I would decide as, on a case-by-case basis. So if somebody could approach me, I want to, I'm looking to do this, and it would have to be beneficial to both me and to the establishment, for me to approve and decide on that.
So...
Can I just clarify for a second? Our restaurant license, it's not just that the board has desired it to be fifty percent food, our G license, which is our restaurant license, requires fifty percent of the revenue to be from food, and then everything else makes up, you know, no more than fifty percent of the total revenue, so just wanted to clarify that that's...
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily mean, because this, like I said at the beginning, is a very different request that we've gotten before, where, where we were desirous of restaurants.
We have other licenses.
Yeah, this isn't going, really isn't going to be a restaurant.
Yeah, that's correct, that is correct.
And I don't know that that necessarily disqualifies it, I think there's a, you know.
No, just like I said, I just want to clarify, our restaurant license has required that we do have other classes of license that do not, so...
And, and, thank you, but that's where my mind was going. So when I was asking about the subscription, so I'm just gonna kind of shift over to the attorney for a moment. I, when I initially read this, I was wondering, would this fall under the category of a private club, if he's offering subscriptions?
At least, at least based on what I've heard so far, I don't believe so, because a private club would be exclusive to members, and I'm hearing him say that it would be open to the public.
That is correct.
But if you paid a certain fee, you might get other perks, I'm not clear what those might be yet, but...
It's a VIP card.
Essentially, that is correct.
Okay.
Just like your Panera punch card, the more you go, the more rewards you get, right?
Exactly, that is correct. So it's just rewarding you for returning to the space.
I think the concept's fantastic. I think you got some room to go on laying out the business plan, so that it resonates and kind of makes sense. You know, barber shop up front, club, restaurant, bar in the back, okay, and then, and then space that you can transform, you know, like you said, the yoga at brewhouses is really common in this area, that Sunday mornings, there's probably fifteen of them within a forty-five minute drive of here that you could go to.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's happened, and having, you know, pop-up venues on the weekend, that this space transforms and turns into this kind of party, or a quinceañera, just what, like, different things, I think it's really unique, I, I'm intrigued. I'd like to see a little, little more detail out of the business plan of what that looks like, what that means, what that is, we got to talk hours of operation, all that kind of stuff, but I think you got something really interesting going.
Thank you.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of going back to what we've done for fifteen years, and that is, if you have food, and you, or you have liquor, liquor license has got to be related to something. Before, we've always had fifty percent food, we've had people come in here, and we've turned them down, like, when they want, and this is what it sounds like to me, the surrounding towns have it, Oswego has it, and they have, like, gambling rooms. They strictly have their gambling machines, they have their wine and beer, whatever, and Oswego gives them a license for that. We have never given a license like that, and this, to me, sounds like, I like the barber shop up out front, because that kind of carries your, your rent, basically, but to me, this is just like that, I mean, you're, you're still serving the beer and the wine, but the gambling video machines, and we've turned people down like this. And I sort of like the concept, but then again, we've turned so many people down and said, you got to have fifty percent food, you know, before you do anything else. We don't care how you make your other fifty percent.
Yeah, and I think, Derek, just for a little bit of history on this, the, several years ago, when they approved the video gaming, they gave us very little say in whether or not somebody can, can do that. We can either allow it in town or ban it, and we allowed it. So the only thing that we can control is the liquor license request, right? And so we modified our ordinances a little bit, so that we were not, it was not desirable, or we didn't think it would be desirable for the community, to end up with a bunch of the video gaming halls, right?
Understood.
So we had restaurants that kind of had that on the side, and people have come in before and have said, I'm going to minimize the gaming, the gaming's just kind of a plus The gaming's just kind of a plus on my business plan. And we've seen shops actually open that it is basically a gaming hall. And they tried to serve some food to meet our requirements, but it didn't work out for anybody, frankly. So, but I guess going back 15 years, even before I was involved, was to avoid just straight-up bars, right? Where it didn't feel like that brought a whole lot of value to the community. But this is not really either of those. And so, like I've said, you know, twice, I think if, if the board was in favor of finding a way to make this happen, assuming that we got, we do need more information and business plan, kind of really fine-tune the proposal. But let's not let our ordinances stand in the way of, of stopping something that's neither a bar or a gaming hall, hopefully.
Maybe it's, I'm sorry.
I, I have two more questions, but if you're building on that, go ahead.
Maybe it's the 50% isn't food. Maybe it's because this is unique and different. Maybe the 50% is, is other versus gaming.
Well, you can't, we can't do that. We can't mention gaming.
Oh, that's right.
So it could be 50% from, you know, barber activity. I don't know. It'd be a separate, it'd have to be its own class and we can figure that out. But, hold on. Let's, we're going to keep walking this way. Sorry.
Can you tell me, how big is the space you're looking at?
This space is 1,248 square feet.
And, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to be visual. I'm trying. How much, how, how much area would the barber shop take care or take up and then, like, how would you divide it?
So the barber shop, because I actually have a rendering of the space. The bar, the barber shop would take up no more than 300 square feet. Barber shops are typically pretty small. I only have one or two barbers actually in there cutting hair. And then the rest of the space would be that back area, that bar area, that mingling and, and fraternizing and, and whatnot.
My last question for now. So as you were looking at Montgomery as a place to, again, it's, it's just, it's a very unique concept for us. Well, at least for me. I won't speak for the board, but for me it is. As you were doing your due diligence, what does your research tell you in terms of demand and how you're, how healthy would your business be?
So I actually live, so I live in Bristol Bay and, in Yorkville. And I ta, I drive by that area every day going to the highway on Orchard. And that way comes, I noticed Yorkville, Oswego, Plano. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty bustling area with that Walmart there. I think it would do extremely well. It, it would serve a, a population that is, I believe, underserved because there's not much to do in terms of something like this. Where the target that I am trying to, that I'm interested in is people who are interested in coming to a clean and, and a, a space that has a very interesting and, and genuine atmosphere. Where, you know, we're not blasting music or anything like that, where you would go into this place and it would feel like it was lit by candles, but the lighting is just set in the atmosphere and it would be some low-lit music. People can go in there, talk, have a couple of drinks and go on about their business. So I, I, I think, I think it'd be a lot of fun because there's not many things to do like this outside of Naperville or you have to go to Chicago. So I, I, that's, when I think of bringing value to the community, that's the type of thing that I think of. And, and I, it is extremely important to me that, one, the place is clean. And two, that the atmosphere remains somewhere safe and that somewhere that people look forward to going to at whatever time during the week that they frequent my establishment.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of things. First off, believe it or not, Derek and I do get our hair cut at the same place. I've known Derek for a long time.
Derek, you get the good guy?
We, we both have Mike.
Yeah, yeah. Mike is, Mike's been cutting my hair since I was eleven years old, so.
Drew and I have known, or, excuse me, Derek and I have known each other for a while. He called me before the meeting and, because he had some questions about coming before the board and stuff. And I told him, I said, it's, it's a unique concept. I've never heard of it, but I'm not against it. I, he's cognizant now of the issues that we had with the establishment across the street and, and those issues. I've asked him to kind of expand on the food aspect and kind of give us more information as far as that. But I also explained to him that, you know, I, I grew up in a little town in southwest Iowa. And a couple of years ago, we went back and my buddy, and we were in Omaha and we did, we said, hey, set up a, like a little bar tour for us. And so we were going from place to place and we'd have a mixed drink at each place. And the first three places were mixed drinks and they were fantastic. And it, it's not something where you're going to go and you're going to get liquored up. You're going to go there for a drink or two and then you're going to leave and do, do what else you have, whatever else you have planned for the night. I like the, the multiple-use space because it can be something that people are using all the time. So I, you know, I said, don't be afraid to let us know what you think and we're, we're going to bombard you with questions. But that, that's our job. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
I got one quick question too. What does your center think of your parking? Because I think you're going in where there is a phone center or something. I don't know what it was.
Oh, the, it used to be, you, you're talking about the previous use of the location. It was a Sprint store. That's correct.
They only usually have three parking spots in front, like, and.
Yeah, there's actually, so that parking lot next door where, for the Walmart, it's, it's, it's right there. It's, I actually, when I drove up there, I parked in that spot. Because that was a concern of mine as well, you know, if we're going to have people in here, you know, I want to have space to park. And the other, the flip of that is during the operations of the bar, that, that space would be empty. There's a Starbucks, a GameStop, a nail place. So there's, those shops are generally closed at that time. If it were to get busy, there is a parking lot adjacent to the left there that people would have no problem parking.
So what are you thinking as far as hours?
So in terms of hours, I don't think the bar and the barber shop would run, like, they wouldn't run all day, all, you know, all night. I would like to have the bar open till around one. I'm not sure what the, what time ordinance mandates that we got to stop selling liquor, but I would like to have the bar open till one or two if, if possible. That's, that's what I'm looking at. And barber shops are open depending on the barbers in there. I know some barbers who are in there for 12 hours a day. I know some who are in there for four hours a day. Me and Steve's barber is in there for 12 hours a day. Mike, Mike's in there from nine to nine. So it would be vastly dependent on the hours that the barbers would decide to work there.
All right. Doug, do you have any questions?
I'm just, I mean, I think the food concept, I mean, I'm just doing some rough math. 1,240 feet includes the washroom?
Yes.
So I'm doing some rough math. Without the washroom, we're down to 800 square feet. When you start figuring in five video gaming machines at about 300.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that many in there. I don't want it to be overrun with the, the machines. I wouldn't want.
So, I mean, I think it's a pretty tight space. I think the concept is fantastic. It's progressive. It's something different. So I'm not opposed to that aspect of it, as long as that's the direction we're headed. I think we can work with trying to figure out a way to make, make the rules work to, to fit. But again, I'm a little concerned because when we talk about food, if you're, if you're down to about 900 square feet, where's the kitchen? And where's your space?
And that was my concern with having that 51% requirement was, I mean, if I go to the actual place where I got this inspiration from, they're not, they don't have a full-service kitchen. They're serving, you know, smaller bites, things that you could cook with the, the mini maker and air fryer and things like that. So I wouldn't be interested in having like a full-service kitchen back there. Like you said, I would, that would take away too much from the space. You know, the, the center focus of the space will be the bar. I would like the bar to be nice. I would like it to attract eyes. And, and when people leave and when they come back, they'll say, man, I got to go to this place. It's got this really cool bar. That would be my primary concern. And as Steve mentioned, serving some very enjoyable mixed drinks, beer and wine, things like that.
I think more, you know, more information like Tom mentioned about the, the business plan and the drawing and things like that will help clarify a lot for us. But, you know, again, I'm not opposed to it.
Would you, the, mention the name again of the?
A-Dubs.
A-Dubs, but the place that, that were you?
Oh, the Blind Barber, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
It comes right up on Google.
The one you're trying to.
You can Google it. It's a, it's an awesome place.
Okay.
Only like four of them in the country, so.
Oh, nice.
So at this point, I think our direction would be we need more information. I think that's, but generally, interested. You know, it's a, it's a different concept that we haven't seen so much. But I would challenge you, when your refining your business plan is to propose your concept. Don't try and fit it in with any one of our ordinances. Or do something because you're, you think we're leaning that way. Propose the concept that you want to open and put all your time and effort into and we'll see if there's a way that we can make that work. I think, I think you understand our goal is to, you know, promote economic development, promote nice, safe facilities in our community. And if your vision, you know, matches with our vision, then I think we can work something out with a liquor license, you know, type of thing. But cha, I would challenge you to do, to prepare your concept, your vision for this and not so much ours. If that includes, you know, food or gaming or everything, figure out how you're going to do that and then bring us more information.
Thank you, Village Board President.
If I could echo the village president, if you could be as specific as possible. Because if then we had a direction to either prepare some new classification of an ordinance or something, we'd have a good direction on where we're going.
I will be thorough.
All right, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Village Board.
Thanks, Derek.
All right. Anything, well, darn, before we get into sports updates, any village-related?
Well, just very quickly, we usually have the declaration or resolution for breast cancer awareness on the first meeting of October. I don't know how we got that.
We saved that for the second meeting.
Matt.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to mention it. We usually have it and we don't have it today, so. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Anybody's sports team win?
Nope.
Go ahead.
Halloween safety event was Sunday. And again, hats off to Commander Falco and the team over there and all the officers that donate all of their time and efforts to put that together and the volunteers. Because it was a fantastic event. Little, little windy, a little chilly, but there was a, a lot of kids out there that had a lot of fun. So thank you that came, everyone that came and.
Yeah, and it's a lot of hard work and you spent a lot of time over there as well. The one thing, I went there with my kids, the one thing that focused on, it is a safety event. All of the kids would go through the stations and my kids actually learned, you know, or refreshed on things they should or shouldn't do before Halloween comes. So I really see tremendous value there.
Yeah, it, it was definitely, and, and again, every year, small things change and modify and get a little bit better and a little bit nicer. So again, they did a great job. Thank you, Chief, for supporting.
Good work. Anything else?
Can I say it now about the Packers?
Yeah, now that Jeff, Jeff walked out, so now you can say it.
Okay, good.
I got home at 5:30 from Wisconsin tonight and noticed that the Packers are on TV against the Lions. So any of you guys want to have a drink with me, I'll go look at the game.
Sounds good.
All right.
Go watch the Packers lose.
I did want to mention this weekend, we have our quarterly recycling event for household hazardous waste and electronic recycling as well as paper shredding, so.
Awesome. Do we have batteries? Can we bring batteries to that?
You can throw those away.
Normal batteries can be thrown in the garbage. The only batteries they'll accept are, are the rechargeable or lead-based batteries.
It's at the police department, right?
It is at Public Works facility.
That's what I meant.
891, no. You are correct.
You said the police department. I am on my game a few years ago.
It's residence-only, right?
Residence-only, Mark.
Residence-only?
Residence-only.
Probably under the DC contract.
Village of Montgomery, residence-only required to have an ID when they pull up.
And tube TVs? Do they accept tube TVs?
There's no limit on TVs.
So they will, they will take the CRT TVs and? Good, okay.
And I would, I would like you just to look at brush pickup more than twice a year, wherever we do it. Because you did it in two days again. Our last Public Works guys took three weeks and that's why they cut them all down. But if this only took two days, and I know there wasn't a lot out, but we got to give better recognition to when it's going to happen. You know, I know you, we did, we did. We got it in the newsletter. We got it in things like that. But if it only takes you two days, I think we ought to do it more often than just twice a year.
I think the big thing to point out, the reason that we're seeing such a reduction in the amount of time that it's taking is the difference in our refuse contract that we had previously. So with DC trash or Lake Shore Recycling now taking the waste, the yard waste periodically in your regular pickup, that's where we're seeing the big reduction when we do our full sweep. Again, the, the brush collection is meant to be for bulk brush pickup.
Right.
So it's for your trimming that you do in the spring and the fall. And anything that's incidental in between is, is where people are utilizing DC trash. I think that's the big reason that we're seeing the reduction in amount of time that it takes us to, to make our sweep through in the spring and fall, which is fantastic for Public Works because there are a multitude of other things that we could definitely focus our time on instead of the brush.
But if it only takes two days, maybe two in the spring or, I, I still think you, you need longer for some of this brush stuff. I see people out two days before the notice, cutting like crazy to get the stuff in there and others go, I missed it again. Because it was only one, we only do it twice a year now, right?
Correct.
I, I could see June, July, August, not even monkeying with that. But in the spring, I could see too, if somebody's going to trim trees and everything, they only got one time to do it. And I guess our, I don't know if it's our advertising or what, but I have more calls afterwards. Is he coming back? I go, no, they don't come back.
So what you're saying is that Trustee Lee is going to be creating a Facebook page to begin to engage and get information out?
Not a Facebook page. I don't even look at that stuff. But, you know, in the past, we always did it and everybody knew when we were going to do it. Now.
So, yeah, so I guess one comment that I'll make is like everything that we do, reassess it after the year and see what happens, see what kind of complaints we got. The other thing is, as we've noticed with other changes, sometimes it takes a little while for people to catch on. But if they get, if they learn and understand that we come, whatever weekend, a year we come, they'll be, they'll start to be ready for it. But take a look at everything, every year, see if it makes sense.
That's good. Yep, we'll definitely take a look at it. Our dates haven't changed from our start and finish from what we usually do. We just basically cut out the middle section. So we still do the first full week of April and the first full week of October, which is what the normal schedule was. We were just doing every month in between, which was pretty drastic. But we'll definitely look to, to push and get the word out a little bit better. One of the other things is I would encourage those people that are calling you to call us because we're not getting that feedback. So we, we're feeling like we're making a good sweep through town. We're not getting a lot of calls to come back and pick that stuff up. So if there's things that are coming in, definitely try and let us know and we can try and do our best to resolve those issues.
I think a lot of it is what, and it's probably tough for you to do, what day are they coming? I know you say put everything on, on Monday, but if the guy, if it rains like it did last weekend, say, then the guy's done. You know what I mean? I know, I know it's hard on you because you can't say these streets and these streets. But that's why I say sometimes even, I don't know, one, twice a week or something.
We'll just say the week of.
Yeah, do you, do you only come?
It is week of.
Like if you come down that street on Monday.
Come back Tuesday.
That's it. One day.
It's one pass down the street. Again, it's got to be out by 7:00 AM Monday morning. You know, it's the same as, basically mirrors several other communities' events. Because if we're anticipating a high level of brush pickup, sometimes what we'll do is we'll send two crews out, one east, one west. So if we tell people, we typically start on the east side and work to the west, now we have the people on the west side of town thinking that they have time before we get there and that may not be the case. Again, it depends on a case-by-case. That's something that we have done a few times here and there. Typically, that's more with a storm-type pickup, but it is something that if we do have the extra staff, we have done. So I think, you know, we just need to be very careful about that because then we're going to have an influx of calls of people that, that feel like they got, they got missed or passed.
And again, the key is that they have to call you guys so that it gets logged and kept track of. I haven't had anybody tell me.
That would be for, yes. So again, we can, we can try and target the people and maybe it's people that aren't, you know, utilizing the website. Maybe it's people that we need to address more with the newsletter or, or something of that nature. So any, any information we can get back to help get the word out to those people, the better. Again, we provide that service to the public, so it's not something that we want to short them on. So we, we definitely want to do our best.
Thank you.
And just to clarify real quick, so when we do have a storm come through and we have damage, you will do a special brush pickup for that?
Depending on the severity of the storm, typically what we do is we go out and we just do some general observation. If we see a lot of limbs that are down excessively, which we did do this spring, we'll, we'll typically work with staff to get something on the website or get the word out that we're going to do a sweep. We try to allow a little bit of time to get that word out. So that way people have that opportunity to drag that brush out and put it out. So, that way, people have that opportunity to drag that brush out and put it out. We do ask that they still put the, the brush out in a manner that complies with the normal regulations. So, it's not any different, but we, we do try to give them time, yes. I can't say we do that for every storm, but if it, we feel that it warrants it, then we'll definitely be out.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? You can see our future meetings listed below. I don't think I need to read those off. We don't have executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Betsinger.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.